My name is Dan Sweeney. I'm the Deputy Opinions Editor of the South Florida Sun Sentinel. The Opinions Editor Steve Boskay will be joining us shortly, I am sure. And of course, since I'm recording this, he'll make sure to get all of your quotes right and have all the information he needs afterwards. With me is Sun Sentinel reporter Scott Travis. It's important that you know that the newsroom side and the opinion side are entirely separate. Scott Travis can ask questions of any of you and maybe covering this from the news side of the paper, but no one in the newsroom has any input on the endorsements that the editorial board makes. So first off, I wanted to, I'm going to go ahead and start by just going around and asking everybody if they could just give a brief, one-minute statement why they feel they are the best candidate to represent this district. And we will go in reverse alphabetical order. So Ms. Lynch Walsh, we'll start with you.
Okay, my name is Dr. Natalie Lynch Walsh, and I have been a volunteer with Broward County Public Schools for more than 10 years. I started when my oldest daughter was in kindergarten. I started at the school level, then the area level, and then I've been at the district level since 2011-12. I have served as the chair for five times of the Facility's Task Force, and I'm also a member of the Audit Committee. And those two pieces, in addition with living in Broward County for over 25 years, and my background, which is in accounting, corporate report, financial reporting, and I've also taught for several years at a college level, all of those things put together, and that I've been immersed in this environment for more than 10 years, I feel makes me the best candidate for District 5.
Thank you. Ruth Lynch, what would make you the best candidate in this district?
What would make me the best candidate in this district, and sorry for my voice, guys, is that I am, the school board is the governance body of the school district. And I am a board governance trainer. I train people to sit on boards. So I understand the necessity for transparency, honesty, fairness, and integrity on the school board. I have been in around this school system and this school board for the past 22 years. I have served, my first service for the school district was serving as the chair of the Charter School Task Force for Broward County School District. I was appointed in that seat by the previous board. And everybody know all of the issues that's gone on with the board and throughout the board. I'm very competent, that I will, I understand the rules of engagement. I understand exactly what the board's duties are, including setting the curriculum for the school district. I feel I am the best qualified person because I understand the rules of engagement when dealing with boards and dealing with the community. I have served in this community for the last 22 years. I've run for school board before, and I understand all of the aspects in dealing with it. I've also helped re-institute the PTA for both Boyd Anderson High School and for Sunland Park. I have, I am now the current Senior Advisor for Parkway Middle School Mentorship Program. And I have to say, we have a wonderful program here. So I think I understand the ins and outs. I'm a corporate veteran, 35 years, so I understand what it means to supervise said policy, said direction, and be ultimately responsible to the students, the parents, and the community for this school board. And one thing I would guarantee you all the time, if you want the truth, vote for Ruth.
Mr. Holness, what makes you the best candidate here?
Thank you, Dan, for inviting us and Scott as well. Well, what makes me the best candidate is that I am coming to the board with a wealth of experience. I have very strong school leadership experience, very strong community service experience. I have a very strong educational background as well, and I currently run a successful learning center in math and reading. I have been in education for approximately 25 years. I was a Broward County school teacher for 17 years. I've taught middle school, I've taught community school, and I've also taught in District 5. I've taught at Dillard Community School, Parkway Community School, and as far as middle schools, I've taught at Apollo Middle, Walters Young Middle, and Lyons Creek Middle. Now, Dan, while at these schools, I was not just a teacher, I implemented programs. For example, at Lyons Creek, I implemented student learning communities, which we had over 400 students in that program in the bottom 25 percentile that gained significantly and were able to perform well on the FCAT at that time. Now we have the FSA. I also have children in public schools. I will be a father on the board, and I know the experiences of students because I deal with that with my own two children in Broward County Public Schools. So I believe I am coming to the board with a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of experience. I also studied in the field of education. I completed a master's in education at Nova and also a doctor of education at Nova. I am also still a certified teacher in the state of Florida. I am certified in four areas, in educational leadership, math, social science, and gifted. And I'm also certified in teaching students with disabilities. So this is my career, this is what I love to do, and I never considered a job because I love helping children and see that they grow and become productive members of the society. And I've been a member of many leadership programs as well in the schools, such as I was the Chair of the School Advisory Council for multiple schools, and so on and so forth.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burgess, yours. What makes you the best candidate in this race?
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Antonio Burgess, and I am a candidate for Broward County Public Schools, District 5. I'm a product of District 5. I was born and raised in District 5. I attended Norfolk Elementary, then I went on to North Andrews Gardens Elementary, came back to Parkway Middle School, graduated from Dillard High School. After graduating from high school, I went on to Florida A&amp;M University, where I earned a bachelor's degree. Came back to the very district that raised me and supported me and instilled important values in me. And the reason why I came back is because I wanted to give that same quality education that was given to me. I've had the opportunity to teach in District 5 schools. My first professional teaching job was at Walker Elementary School. And at Walker Elementary School, at the time, we were at F school, and we brought that school from an F to a C. Then an opportunity came to teach at Lauderdale Lakes Middle School in Lauderdale Lakes, Florida. And then I had another opportunity to teach at Dillard High School, which is the school that I graduated from. After graduating, I mean, after teaching at Dillard High School, I had an opportunity to work at the district level, providing interventions and supports for students. Currently, I am the Coordinator for Mentoring Initiatives, 5,000 Role Models, and several other district mentor initiatives. I'm running because public education is at a serious danger right now. But as bad as it may seem, I'm running because when I go into schools across this district and look into the eyes of boys and girls, I see hope. And I see that they need someone that's going to make decisions that not only is going to impact them now, but the future. I'm running because our teachers and staff, they're tired and underpaid. Yet, they show up every single day, committed to making a difference. I'm running because our parents are tired. They're tired of their voices being taken for granted or falling on deaf ears. I am community-centered. I've been a part of my community, giving back since I graduated from high school. I've always been a community leader. I've always cared about students and families. It shows through my work and my awards. Again, I am a proven leader, a mentor, and an advocate for community and schools. I'm a product of District 5, and I'm ready to move District 5 forward.
Thanks. Let me follow up on something you just said there, Mr. Burgess. You said that parents, you know, parents' complaints, parents' issues are falling on deaf ears. You know, the watchword at the state level in education this year has been parental rights. And you're saying that, in fact, in Broward County, that parents are being ignored, the parents, you know, their concerns are not being heard. Do you think the bills that have been passed, laws that have been passed, dealing with parental rights at the state level could have a positive effect in Broward County schools?
So when you say the parental rights, Mr. Mon, you're saying the Don't Say Gay bill, is that correct?
Among others, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, that's the most notable and most politicized version of that. And when I say parents' voices, you know, I go into the different schools throughout the district. I am in the community, and I hear parents complain. They complain to the board members. They complain to their school leaders, their teachers, and just other community stakeholders about simple things. The operation of the school, it could be between different students, it could be about different support services. It varies. And as a board member, I want to make sure that not only am I hearing those concerns, but I am trying my best to address those concerns along with my other board members.
Okay. Mr. Holness, what needs to change at the board? You know, there's been a history of, you know, incompetence, corruption, going back, not just recently, but years and years over this board. What do you do to make sure that the image and, you know, in real life, the actuality of the board changes from what it's been in the past?
Okay, I think, Dan, one of the most important approach we can have as a board is to ensure that we have full transparency to the community, to the public, and that we involve the community in decision-making processes as well. I think their input is very important. So when we look to make any kind of major decisions, I think it's very important to get community input and to be fully transparent. I believe with that, we will be able to build trust in the community and to have an image where our parents and our community are proud of the board.
Ms. Carter Lynch, if you don't want me calling that to separate you out from Ms. Lynch Walsh?
Yeah, you can do that. I prefer Carter Lynch, as a matter of fact.
That's going to make things a little clearer for me. So we've talked a little bit about, you know, listening to parents and all that. One of the things that, you know, you hear a lot of from parents is the teaching, the grade levels have all seen a significant slide over the time of the pandemic. How do you get more kids back to school? And how do you get those who are in school back up to grade level?
Okay, that's, that's, that's going to be a tough one, too, for everybody. Let's just face it. The pandemic caused a serious, serious issue with kids coming back to school. And I think parents, and to Mr. Burgess's point, we, the school district, has not been real responsive to parents when it comes to their kids. We, and I have to, we have to understand, this mental health issue is job one for me because everybody is suffering from mental health issues. We have an expectation of our students, but we don't have enough rehab and put enough resources into the schools to deal with the issues that we're having with it. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I think personally, to the question that you asked earlier about having parents, the new law that just passed, I think it's a travesty. I think it's a travesty. I think it's one of those situations where we're actually finding problems for the solutions that are already there. I think if we increase the mental health piece, if we make the, be more responsive to the parents, that's been the biggest complaints that I have from parents throughout my travels in Broward County, is that they don't feel like they're responsive. And also, we got to make sure that we are accountable. Let's talk about the money factor. Some schools get what they need, and some schools don't. I'm working with Parkway Middle School. We've been worried about Parkway Middle School for the last 18 years in getting what they need as far as the school being fixed. And every time we go back to the board, there's no money. So I would like to first go in, my job would be, to see the accountability for all of the funds that the school board is responsible for. Where is the money going?
Ms. Lynch Walsh, you mentioned something in your questionnaire about that, how difficult to track down exactly where money is going, how it's being spent. I think you specifically said it about the
Referendum.
Yes, the referendum, referendum money that, you know, is being increased and up to one mil, should voters approve, of course, in the next election. How do you increase transparency on the money being spent? And also, if you could address the previous question as well, how do you, how do you turn grades around? How do you get kids back into schools?
Well, first, we have to understand that there were kids that were not on grade level before the pandemic, and now it's even worse because I pulled the grades for District 5 for the, and I did analysis of the past 10 years. And it's also hard to tell how much of the increase that occurred before the pandemic was due to all the magnet programs that have been, were put in place over the past 10 years. Because what magnet programs do is they mask what's really happening in terms of students who aren't achieving. So back in 2012, the goal was to have something like 80-something percent of kids on grade level. Well, in District 5, there were only two schools that got anywhere towards 70%. And then the rest of them are usually between 30 and 50%. So those have now decreased, and we're back to seeing schools, there are some schools that are in the teens in terms of English Language Arts proficiency. So we have to look for things that work in terms of getting kids to read. You don't need fancy schmancy magnet programs if the kids cannot read and are not proficient in math. You kind of have to get back to basics and figure out which kids need more support and give them that support or else they're never getting caught up. The achievement gap between Black and white students in Broward County matches the state and has not moved much in 10 years. So there was a goal to close that achievement gap 10 years ago. But anytime that you have, you set a goal without measurable goals and a strategy, it just remains this sort of dream that everybody has. So you have to break down, and the goals have to be realistic. We can't say that we're going to have 100% of kids reading at grade level in two years. That's not realistic. So we have to break down what is going on at each school and provide, is it pre-K programs that need to happen? Is it aftercare? Is it both things that need to happen? That's as far as getting the performance levels up. In terms of getting kids back to school, I'm basically running on transparency, integrity, and rebuilding public trust because public trust is critical. The district has lost it. The grand jury report is about to come out, and that's not going to improve matters. We lost kids during the pandemic because the district wasn't ready to go to virtual learning. And my own two kids, who are both in high school, were home for the year of COVID and then went back to school. And the district, not only was the district not ready to do virtual learning, it had Canvas for several years, but Canvas was not implemented across the board there. It's not in the teachers' contracts. And the district is not known for doing great training. So then the kids came back to school, and the district was not necessarily ready for the ones that came back to school. They kind of picked up where they left off the year before in the sense that there should have been this transition period, and there wasn't much of a transition period. So getting them back to school is about, now that they've gone, is about rebuilding public trust and being clear in what sort of strategies. And the district just canceled, they were doing summer school, and there was supposed to be a workshop discussing what they were doing for summer school. Well, then they canceled the workshop, so now we don't know what the summer school plans are. And it doesn't seem as though they're rescheduling the workshop. So that, that right there isn't helping because nobody knows what they're trying to accomplish this summer.
Understood. Ms. Carter Lynch, I see you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I had my hand up because I am a strong proponent of magnet schools. And I want that, that I would not want to dismantle magnet schools. I really would not.
Never said I'm trying to dismantle it.
I did not interrupt you, madam, and please don't interrupt me. I don't, in Broward County, three schools in District 5 are magnet schools that I've dealt with. That's Dillard, that's Boyd Anderson, and that's, as a matter of fact, Parkway Middle School is the only middle magnet school in the district. So I am, I just wanted to put that out there, that I don't think that we should get rid of anything. I think we can, everything, there's always improvement for everything, but I would think it would be a disservice to my community if we would get rid of the current magnet schools. That's what
Understood. And we'll stipulate that Ms. Lynch Walsh did not say to actually get rid of magnet schools so much as, you know, concentrate on the basics, right? If you wanted to clarify yourself, though, please do.
Yes, I'd like to clarify. So basically, there are other schools with magnet programs, there are schools with STEM programs, and the one that I was picturing in my head at the time was probably Royal Palm Elementary. Plantation Middle and High both have magnet programs. They have the International Baccalaureate. So what has never been done in this district is looking at a cost-benefit analysis of the magnet programs because they come with transportation. And they started doing it several years ago and just never had to come back. So all of these things cost money. On the other hand, you can have a great magnet program like Parkway Middle's Performing Arts. It's a performing arts magnet, and you can starve a program to death by not giving it the proper resources. There is, there are a couple of schools that feed into Parkway Middle, but when you have facilities that look like Parkway Middle, and actually Parkway Middle was on the board workshop, the budget workshop that got canceled. So now it's a question mark again as to whether they're going to fund, finally, the buildings that need to be replaced. People will not go, for the most part, to schools that are in disrepair, sometimes, but not always. So that's, there are, you need to look at whether they're being effective and if there's something better that needs to be there. But my point with magnet programs is they can sometimes mask the kids that are the lowest performing because you bring in just enough high-performing kids that you don't see the kids down here anymore. And then the school is a C, but you have a lot of kids failing, and they bring in just enough, say at a Lauder Hill 6 to 12, which is a C, but the kids at the middle school level do not automatically qualify for the high school level. They have to have the grades to get into Lauder Hill 6 to 12 as a high school student. So all of these programs need to be assessed.
Mr. Burgess, I see you nodding your head there. Through the, through the magnet programs, while having their place, can sometimes mask underlying issues. Is that something you agree with?
You know, Ms. Natalie Lynch Walsh, Dr. Natalie Lynch Walsh, she brought up a great point, which is true. When you have the magnet programs that come into the schools, and some of the, some of the magnet students are high-performance students, and high-performance students are students who are at Level 3, 4 on up in ELA and MAB. And sometimes, you know, when you look at the big picture, which is the school grade, and when you finally dissect the school grade data and how they, what they use to calculate the school grades, you do see that some of the students, the high-knee students, which is our students who tend to perform lower on the state standardized test, they are masked. So the school could have a B, but you still have 30% reading on grade level or 30% doing math when you know you have a school of 100% participants. But I think, you know, getting kids back into school, I think it takes the community. It takes community stakeholders, local officials, it takes churches, it takes organizations to be a part of it. And when you disenfranchise those groups throughout the process, that's why it's important that you always engage the community in decisions, and the number one stakeholder is the parent. You want to make sure that you always keep them engaged, and not just on important issues, but continuous throughout the whole entire educational process. And I believe that that's what our board has failed to do throughout the years. And that's why, you know, it's hard to engage the community, have, you know, buy-in from the community stakeholders.
All right. Well, I want to move on from the magnet schools discussion, and I want to also make sure that Scott Travis and Sher Molten, from the news side, have a chance to ask questions as well. Though I realize I didn't get to Mr. Holness regarding that issue. Is there anything you wanted to add there?
Right.
You're breaking up a little there. I think we've lost Mr. Holness. We will, we will get back to him soon as he can rejoin or get some better internet. But in the meantime, Scott Travis, Sher Molten, if you had any questions to ask candidates, please, please do so.
Yes, I have a couple of them. So this one is for Dr. Natalie Lynch Walsh. One of the issues that I have heard, you know, from somebody who obviously is not a supporter of yours, was that this is a candidate who keeps running for school board because she doesn't get jobs with the school district. She applies for jobs and doesn't get those. So could you please respond? Are you doing this because you couldn't get hired by the school district? So this is another way to go and become the boss?
So this is the second time I've run for school board. And anyone who knows me knows that this is the last thing I wanted to be doing with my summer. However, I have tried every way as, in an advisory capacity, it takes an inordinate amount of time to get the school district to do the right thing. And you can only do that so many times. The thing that was the catalyst was the district recently put together a long-term planning steering committee and didn't put external stakeholders on it. So as someone who was here in 2012, 2013, and 2014, to see all of the mistakes that happened with the general obligation bond, the last thing I would ever do is sit through making all the same mistakes that were made 10 years ago. I don't have it in me. But I'm afraid that if we can't, if I cannot, as, I can't as a volunteer, I have done as much as I can as a volunteer. I have offered repeatedly, and let's be clear, I applied when Lori Aladaf got on the board. She had lost her daughter. And I met her, and she sort of almost embarrassingly asked, because it was the only position she was in control of. She asked if I would be her aide. And if you had met her during that time period, right after she lost her daughter, I couldn't say no to her. I've never been anyone's secretary in my life because I have a four-year accounting degree, started as a staff accountant and moved up from there, got a master's and a PhD. So, but if that was the thing that it took, she wanted to be effective in her first year. So she asked if I would, for a year, be her assistant. And if that was something that I could do to ease her pain because it was so unbearable being around her, then I was going to do that. But the, but if you could see, and I have the email, so you can see the absolute shenanigans that went on, and they refused, whether it was Runcie, the former General Counsel, there were a collection of people involved in preventing that from happening. The past couple of board members have hired whoever they want as an assistant. The only person that ever got pushback was Lori Aladaf. So that was one. Now, most recently, because of this long-term planning and the absolute disaster that the general obligation bond, the SMART program, has been, I have offered to, instead of me complaining and spending all of my time telling them what they're doing wrong, let me try to fix what can be fixed and prevent the same mistakes from happening. So I did apply for the Facility's chief position, sort of tongue-in-cheek, because it's not going to happen. But, and I haven't heard anything since then. And that is the extent of my applying over and over. So that's it. So in the meantime, the current superintendent is the one that is refusing to put external stakeholders on the Long-Term Planning Steering Committee, even though every other district, as best practices, puts external stakeholders. The Facility's Task Force is by design the body that you would want on a Long-Term Planning Steering Committee as an external stakeholder, as is the Diversity Committee and probably District Advisory Council. But she has yet to respond to that. Also, a few months, several months ago, the superintendent relied upon false a few months, several months ago, the superintendent relied upon false official statements made by staff to make the wrong decision when it came to Stranahan High School's cafeteria. They are reusing designs. What people were sold on is that it was cheaper and faster. And as of right now, I haven't gotten an updated schedule or budget, but I have a gut feeling that it will not be any cheaper or any faster than the budget for a new, new design, like design from scratch cafeteria. So between that and the long-term planning, I got myself down to the supervisor of elections office because the, the Stranahan cafeteria, anyone that knows the facility's task force or knows me, knows that I have been complaining about what has happened with that cafeteria for several months. And this seems the only way to get the superintendent and most of the school board's attention because I'm not letting go of the Stranahan cafeteria issue. And the long-term planning with no ex- external stakeholders is a huge problem for me. And those are the, that is what was going through my head when I went down to the SOE.
Okay, thank you. And um, uh, uh, Mr. Burgess, there is a question that was also brought by somebody to me was that uh whether you actually live in the uh district because you had filed under uh Fort Lauderdale address. And then later you fought, you uh qualified under a Lauder Hill address. Did you move and did you move for the purpose of uh of, of, of running for this office? Or are you planning to move if you get elected or what, what's your plans?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so for the record, I live in the city of Lauder Hill. When I originally filed, I did use uh a Fort Lauderdale address, which is my parents' address. When I went off to school, I used my parents' address. That is a permanent address that I am associated with. I am renting in the city of Lauder Hill, have rented for over a year in the city of Lauder Hill, and that's my residence, so.
Okay.
And I amend that, I amended my name as well.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I amended my name
Okay.
as well.
Okay.
Because I included my middle name, but I took it off.
Okay, and uh Dr. Holness, I, that's, I've also heard uh issues about your residence that you keep moving to different places. Like you've run for a number of offices and you've had like a different address in the last few years every time you've uh run for a different office, so. Uh, what, can you sort of explain that situation and did you move to your current address so that you could run for District Five?
Okay, thank you, Scott, for that question. And if you don't mind, I'd also like, after I answer that question, to comment on the question about learning, learning uh gaps that's been created. Um, but um, no, that's absolutely not true. I've lived in the city of Plantation for fifteen years. I then relocated to the city of Sunrise to where I currently live um in Sunrise for the last five or six years. Now, uh, uh, I grew, um, uh, in the city of Plantation, I had a home in Plantation. We sold a home, um, and uh I moved to Sunrise. The reason I moved to Sunrise actually because my kids love the Sawgrass Mills area, and so um we, I decided to live in that area. I did go through, um, uh, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I did go through a divorce years ago and my wife and I had lived in Plantation. So when we uh finalized the divorce and I, and we moved, my sons uh indicated that they would love to live close to the Sawgrass Mills Mall. And since then, I've been uh making sure that I live in that area. Now, I was living um in the western part of Sunrise, to which I still live. Um, but um I was renting and the uh landlord indicated that he needed um the home after three years. So I then moved after he, um, he was moving family into his home. And so I then rented um uh in the current location that I've been now for the last two years. So I haven't been moving because of running for office, I moved because of the interest of my family and my children.
Oh, and your children go to Stoneman Douglas and Parkland, right?
That's correct, because that's where their mom lived when we had the divorce. So um we made a um, a, a decision together, and we do have an amicably relationship in raising our children. And she felt that logistically, uh, because she'll be taking them back and forth to school, that it would be best that they go to school there instead of in the Sunrise area, to which I had agreed.
Okay.
Okay, now, I'd, I'd like to answer the question regarding um the learning gaps that Dan mentioned, and also how we can promote the schools, because I got cut off, I'm so sorry, I'm in my car and the connection is somewhat not great. So um, you know, i- it's important, Dan, that we um look at ways in which we can create programs and initiatives that will improve student learning outcome. Uh, the period of COVID has created a significant COVID slide. I mean, I've seen the students coming into my business in my learning center, and uh they're falling way behind. Um, now, I have experience in creating programs that improve student uh learning. Uh, you can contact Lyons Creek Middle School. I created student learning communities that was um subsequently uh for a period of time adopted by, I think, Mac Nickel Middle. And we had over four hundred students in the program in the bottom twenty-five percentile, and their scores went up when they took the F-Gat. So we have to look at ways in which we can um address this issue of the learning gaps created by the pandemic and otherwise, by looking at programs that we can create um and having someone with the experience to be able to do that. Now, it's important that we have formative assessments that will determine what are the learning gaps that are there and, and which students uh is it applicable to? And then we have to then have a targeted approach to these students to provide um programs that will improve their learning outcome and assess the learning outcome using summative assessments. Now, in terms of promoting schools and why we have uh schools losing students and so on, I think it's important that as a district that we do a better job of promoting the success of our schools. For example, Lauder Hill six through twelve had a hundred percent graduation rate in the last few years. I think we have to have uh much better community outreach and community um events to promote the good that's taking place. So parents can see that um, you know, we actually have great things happening in our public schools as well. And of course, we need to, as I said before, uh, do a lot more in terms of um uh providing programs that will improve student learning outcome and communicate these results to parents so they can be confident that your kids will be successful in our public schools. So we have to be data-driven, we have to have action plan, and we have to involve the community in knowing the good things that we're doing in the public schools.
Thank you.
Scott, did you have a, did you have another?
Yes, no, I actually did have another question, which was, um, I, I wanted to feel, one of the criticisms um I, I've heard from a lot of people in the district, it seemed, people seem to be very divided about the grand jury, uh, Mr. Runcie's uh being, stepping down last year, that they felt that this was, the grand jury was a witch hunt um by a, by the governor. And I was just wondering what uh candidates feel about that particular um issue. If you feel like this grand jury was something that was needed because of issues that are happening in the district? Or is this basically a way for a Republican governor to try to go after Democrats? So whoever wants to speak.
Uh, Mr. Witherspoon, since you're just joining us and you got here just in time to hear that question, um, why don't you, uh, why don't you start off with that one? Uh, and uh, and we'll, we'll go around, I see a lot of hands raised.
Okay, um, um, I, I, I think anything that is going to, do you, do you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. If you could mute your microphone when you're not talking, it would probably help a little bit. I think, Mr. Burgess, I think we're getting some feedback uh from, from your side. Uh, if you can mute when you're not talking, that'd be good.
I'm using the web browser, so I'm a little unsure.
There should be a microphone button on the, among the buttons on the bottom, on the bottom left side.
No, I don't see it.
Okay, uh, well, we'll, we'll do what we can. Mr. Witherspoon, uh, go, go ahead.
I don't, I don't think that it was um, uh, anything, uh, any, in point intended as it relates to uh the grand jury. Um, I think that if we're going to, as a school district, if we're going to do what we need to do as it relates to making sure that our school is safe and that everyone, everyone in every school area is safe, uh, sometimes we have to do what we need to do. It doesn't matter what, um, what, um, um, if they're Democrat, if they're Republican, um, I, I don't think that it was anything uh intended directly towards anyone. But sometimes we just have to do what we need to do to make sure uh that our schools are kept safe. So I think it was a great idea for that to happen.
Okay, and uh, Ms. Ms. Lynch Walsh, and then we'll go to Mr. Burgess.
Okay, I actually had my hand, I thought I'd taken my hand down. I just wanted to clarify, I do concur with Mr. Witherspoon that this was about, the grand jury was about safety. But we needed a grand jury to deal with the facilities and the SMART program and how that came about. In fact, the whole thing, we need another grand jury just to investigate how resources were allocated for the SMART program. But this was about safety and what was and wasn't done as a district. And as someone that sits on the audit committee, I had to uh continuously advocate to get real-time audits of behavioral threat assessment compliance. And we're finally, I think by September, we should have the first of the audits on the current school year. The chief auditor did want, thought he was just going to have an audit next year to tell us about this year. And I had to, I had to go as far as sending clips of him saying that and misleading a school board member to the Office of Safe Schools and the head of the MSD Commission. That, that's what it takes around here sometimes to get people to do the right things, to put enough pressure on certain people. And I would like to think the chief auditor doesn't wake up in the morning deciding to do what he's going to do, which suggests that it's coming from someone above him on the food chain. But essentially, we're still not where we need to be with safety. Um, and we do need a separate grand jury report. I would like to point out, Lauder Hill six to twelve, yes, it's very easy to have a hundred percent graduation rate when you've got like thirty kids in that gr- senior class, which gets back to my point about masking what's actually going on there. Because what feeds into Lauder Hill six to twelve is Endeavor, which I believe is a D, and Royal Palm Elementary. And those two are sort of the epicenter of an area that needs to be really looked at in terms of performance. But yes, so the argument could be made that Lauder Hill six to twelve, as a six to twelve as opposed to a middle school, might not be working. And that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Burgess, you were next, and uh then we'll go to uh Ms. Carter Lynch and Mr. Holness. Mr. Burgess? You're, you're, now you're muted.
Turn on. All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, just to piggyback on what um Dr. Walsh said, um, that is another case, you know, Lauder Hill, they have about, I want to say about twenty students in their um graduating class. Um, and, and probably a hundred percent of those students are high-performing uh students. So it is easy, and that is another case of masking, and, and when you don't look at the big picture and you really dissect it, you really look at the data and see the disparities amongst the achievement levels of the students at the school. But back to the grand jury, um, I think it's information that we need to know. Um, you know, moving forward and how we change the culture of, of, of the board and the work that we do. Uh, the feedback, um, I think will help us, um, you know, moving in the right direction. Whether that be training for all of our uh school board members and our staff at that level. Um, just good information that is needed um to move the board uh forward and to help students.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, Ms. Ms. Carter Lynch, you had something on? Oh, you're, you're muted.
I've got to run for a minute, can I, I'll be right back. Could you just go ahead with Mr.?
Okay, that's, that's fine. Mr. Holness? You also are muted.
Okay, Dan, I just, uh, thank you. I'd just like to reiterate now, the, the point of my reference to Lauder Hill, a- and it could be any school. The, the, the point is not to necessarily discredit anything that they're doing or the number of students. The point is to, is to provide parents with substantive information to promote our schools in a positive way. I understand that there are concerns in different schools and so on, but we're trying to improve the, or increase the student population in our public schools. And I, and, and the point that I'm making is that we need to also look at the positives in our schools and promote that to our uh parents and to the community. Now, uh, there are many schools that have increased in graduation rates all over the county. And, and it's okay for us to point out what's wrong, but it's also important that we should point out what's right and what's going good for our schools. And I like to, to address the issues of concern, but I also like to um celebrate the issues of success and to promote those to parents. And that was the point that was being made, uh, as, and Lauder Hill was just used as one reference, there are many other references that we could make as well. Now, in terms of the grand jury, um, I think, yes, it's important to have a grand jury uh investigation, and I, I agree with that. Uh, whether or not it was a witch hunt and, and so on and so forth, um, you know, I don't have enough uh substantive evidence to, to conclude that it was. Um, but I think what's important is that we work with our current superintendent, because this is what we now have, and see how we can um work with uh Ms. Cartwright to um, to understand the community and to understand our schools and to see how she'll do in the next few years. So that's my focus, is to really look at where we are now as opposed to still, uh, you know, looking at where we were. Um, although that's important to have a better future, but I think now we need to focus on Ms. Cartwright and see uh how she's going to perform in the near future and, and distant future.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Carter Lynch.
Yes, uh, as far as the grand jury uh report.
Yes.
We, there always need to be checks and balances, always. I have no problems with any report. And it, and, and it will make us better. I think it'll make us better, it'll show us where the uh issues are. And then show, show us how we can do a better job. Let's talk about the real deal, you know. Uh, yeah, it's, they do probably do a lot of things wrong. I've gone through, I've seen, what, two, three, four, super, four different superintendents come aboard. We have to, as board members, try to get stuff done. We can't get anything done unless we're building consensus with each other. Am I going to be in agreement? Absolutely not. But am I going to be able to build consensus? And you can't get anything done by yourself. That's the first thing I have to say. And I think any superintendent that comes in should be afforded the same opportunity as all of the other superintendents were given to do their job. I really, truly, then, we have to be, be supportive of that. Now, it is our job as board members to oversee that, to make sure the board, the, the school is being run, that district is being run properly. But we can't go in being angry about anything. We have to go in trying to make sure that we are supporting the parents, supporting the community, and that we're making sure that everything is transparent. But I think that's our major, major issue, is transparency. I've been, ever since I've been here, the last twenty-two years, every superintendent, the community has complained about a lack of transparency. And especially when it comes to how they spend our dollars. We do not know where the money is going, and that's the first thing I think we need to do. Let's find out what is being done with our money. Then that was a question that I think Scott asked about the referendum. The referendum, at first I was uh one hundred percent on board. But now, I'm, I'm on the fence for the simple reason is you got the high cost of living, you got inflation. You got all of these things that are, that our parents in the community is faced with right now. So I don't know whether slapping on another tax. And the sad part about it, it hasn't been explained properly that the eight hundred million bond issue and the referendum are two different, two different things. And that hasn't been explained to, to the level that it should be. Then I was talking to Marty Care the other day, and he said, well, you know, with inflation, if we had stayed at the half mill, we were going to have an increase anyway. So there's a lot of things that I think we need to take a look at before I'm a hundred percent on board with just throwing money at stuff all the time. Until we find out exactly where this money is and where it's going and how it's going, I don't think we need to throw money just, just like that.
Hi, how are you? Okay, thank you. Um, Scott, did you have another question? Your microphone.
Yeah, I, I guess, um, do you feel like that the school district should have gone after a full mill? Um, given that this, and, and Ms. uh, uh, Lynch has already answered that one, but I was wondering about the others. Um, you know, what, what, how do you feel about the fact that uh the school district is asking voters for a full mill and doing it in August instead of uh November when most people are, are voting? If anyone else wants to answer that. If anyone else wants to answer that.
I, I'm assuming you mean Carter Lynch, not Lynch Walsh.
Correct. I would have said Dr. Lynch Walsh if I had meant. So that's why I said Ms. Lynch.
Um, so, it, it, I guess they always say hindsight is twenty twenty. The easiest thing in the world would have been to have asked the voters for a full mill back in twenty eighteen, whenever, before COVID, before inflation, before it looked like we were spiraling into another recession. Um, but much like the eight hundred million dollar bond, so that was a function of the prior administration being afraid to ask for the actual funding it needed. Eight hundred million was only enough to create chaos across the district when two billion was what was actually needed to really make an impact on schools. Cause we've sentenced a generation of kids to facilities that you now can't demolish. So barring that, it is, uh, what should be happening now is complete transparency. And yet I still have an unanswered set of emails where I've asked for details on top of what the district provided for the current allocations, where you have line items that say that it's such and such position and the fringe benefits are sixty-seven percent of the salaries. Well, that doesn't make any sense, but apparently they don't feel the need to explain that. So if this referendum fails, it will be due to lack of transparency on top of the people that are already hesitant because of the situation we're currently in. They also haven't clarified how the proposed referendum will be allocated. That hasn't been negotiated yet. So essentially, people are being asked to vote on something without truly knowing where it's going. And teachers are the ones that they keep saying are getting the money, but it's teachers and school-based personnel, which includes anybody and everybody at the school level. In addition to safety and security and mental health positions, which they claimed they weren't able to fill last time, there was a shortage of mental health professionals. So without absolute brutal transparency, I fear this thing is doomed. It would have made more sense to put it on in November and get the additional transparency that they seem to be resisting. I don't know, maybe they have a crystal ball and they figure people are going to vote for it anyway. But, um, it, it's, I, 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 the, 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 they've sort of boxed us, boxed us all into a corner. Do you want teachers and staff to have the supplements? If the answer is yes, you kind of have to vote for it. But as board members, the board has to ensure complete transparency. It is the board's job to make sure that the superintendent and all of the staff are following state statute, federal laws, state laws, board policy, and that hasn't been happening. You can't, it isn't the superintendent's job to do their job and not follow all of those rules. And if you're trying to get transparency, you're kind of working at cross purposes with the board to not have the deputy superintendent of operations, who used to be the chief financial officer, provide that level of transparency. Uh, but the board also hasn't been demanding it, so I'm not sure what's going to happen on August twenty-third regarding the referendum.
Okay, Mr. Witherspoon?
Uh, yes, um, as, as, um, Ms. Ruth, uh, Lynch and Ms. Natalie, uh, Walsh, uh, Lynch Walsh, have, both of them have, um, indicated. Um, at, at first, I was definitely all for it because of the salaries uh, and the, you know, that increase that the, the staff, the teachers, and the mental health piece and safety and security. Uh, those were all things that, that was talked about. But what should have been going on, even, uh, when they first, uh, made it, made the initial that they're going after this money, uh, I believe that a campaign should have started, uh, within the community. There should have been meetings. When they were around here, uh, doing meetings with the superintendent introducing her, then there should have been meetings, uh, also to let the community know, well, this is what we're trying to get uh, with the referendum, this is what we're needing, this is what we're asking the community for. Um, as a taxpayer, uh, in the community and a person that, you know, that's a part of this community, I don't know exactly where my money is going to be going. So those things should have been in place prior to. And I think that it should have been actually on November, uh, in, in November, uh, to give the people some time to think about exactly, um, what's, what's going to happen with this money.
Okay, Ms. Lynch, you had your hand up. Ruth Lynch?
Um, well, okay, Mr. Holness, you have yours up too, so if you want to go.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Lynch.
Oh, yeah. The sad part about it, my fear is, is that if they don't get it, it's gone. That's the sad part about it. Because it, it, it is, this, this particular initial is sunsetted. So we're asking for them to, to vote on it again. And my fear is, is that if that money is earmarked, and that's a big if, because we don't have any transparency, if that money has been earmarked for teachers' bonuses, for salaries and that type of thing, and they are not able to get those, my fear is that we're going to have a mass exodus of teachers leaving Broward County to go elsewhere to find a job because of lack of salary. That's one of my fears about it.
Okay, Mr. Burgess?
Alrighty, can you hear me?
Yes.
You know, from my experience in the district, when we do these referendums and we ask for these time periods of, of money, we always, it, it always puts us in a bind like we're in now. Um, you know, I, I do support the secure the next generation, uh, referendum because of what it provides. But I will say we cannot continue doing business as usual. We have to come up with a way or medium on how we can, how we can survive without it. We have to, like, we have to create a, a, a financial plan, or we have to build it into the budget to where we can sustain it, um, after, you know, three or four years. And we don't have to ask community stakeholders, uh, for this, um, this additional, um, money to provide salary, uh, enhancement, support, mental support services, safety and security. Our hands are tied, because if we don't, from the data and the information that we receive, we will lose resources, which includes people, um, and positions and salaries. Um, but I do support it, um, but I will say we do need more transparency, which is important, trust. And, uh, we got to communicate with our stakeholders. You know, we can't just come one time a year or every three, four years. It has to be ongoing. It has to be on. Thank you.
Okay, alright. If, 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 Dr. Holness, if, and if you wanted to make a brief statement, because I know we're probably running out of time.
Um, yes, I, I really want to comment on this issue as well. Uh, listen, the, the, the bottom line is teachers are not paid enough. We're unable to retain and attract, uh, qualified teachers because of the, the salaries. State of Florida ranked forty-six or forty-seven in the nation, so we're not getting enough money from Tallahassee. The next generation referendum, I understand that it will be, uh, an increase in, in taxes for our residents, but it is, it is absolutely important, and I, and I strongly support it. Um, now, we're not doing anything different from what Palm Beach or Dade County are doing. In fact, uh, Dade County is, uh, putting out to voters to increase theirs from point seven five to one. Palm Beach is already at one mil, and, and we're moving to one mil. So we are doing exactly as the other two counties, uh, to the north and south of us. Um, now, yes, this will be an increase in taxes, and, and I'd, I'd like to make this clear to the voters and the residents. Um, uh, what will the increase look like? Well, it's point five mil additional from what, uh, from the, uh, point five mil that we currently have. So if you have a three hundred thousand dollar property, uh, that's approximately fifty cents per one thousand dollars. That's about twelve dollars and fifty cents per month. Now, is, is, is twelve dollars and fifty cents important? Of course. But also equally important is that we're able to use those resources to, uh, provide some payment to our teachers. Um, I believe about, uh, it's approximately a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars of this money that will go to teachers, um, uh, to public schools and about forty-plus million to charter schools. And seventy-five percent of this will go to teacher's salary. Uh, eighteen percent of it will go to our security personnel and seven percent to mental health. These are all important issues that we're battling in the district. So I think it's absolutely important, uh, to ask voters if you can come up with an additional, uh, dollars, few dollars to really ensure that we are providing the maximum learning outcome for our students by retaining and attracting qualified teachers, by keeping our schools safe and providing mental health resources. Now, like I said, the, the issue goes back to Tallahassee. We don't get enough funding. So we have to find alternative ways to get this done and ensure that our kids are okay for the future. So I strongly support it.
Okay, thank you. We, uh, we are more than out of time. Uh, so, uh, I, I want to give everybody a chance, if, if there's any ground that, uh, we didn't cover. Uh, and, uh, you know, anything else they wanted to, to bring up, I wanted to give everybody just one minute to make a, a, a closing argument or address any issues that we haven't yet that they feel need to be said. Um, and, uh, we went in reverse alphabetical order to start, so we will go in alphabetical order to begin now. And so, Mr. Burgess, go ahead. One minute, please.
Alright. Like I said before, I'm a product of District Five. I was born in District Five, educated in District Five, attended District Five schools, came back, graduated to teach and to give the same quality of education that was given to me. Um, I'm a community servant. Uh, I work through my different organizations that I am a part of. Um, and, and, and I, I believe that it is time for me to lead District Five for, you know, this campaign is about every student voice. It's about every teacher and staff voice. It's about every community stakeholder's voice. It is time that we bring them back to the table and move our district forward. You know, I've had the opportunity to go into different schools throughout the district through the work that I do now. And I see the disparities amongst the schools out west and the inner city schools. It's important that District Five has a fighter, someone that is community oriented, and someone that is from the community, and has a love and passion through its work, um, for the community to advocate, fight, and lead for the parents and students. I am up for the challenge. I'm ready to move District Five forward, and thank you. And please vote August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Burgess. Mr. Holness?
Yes, um, I'd like to say to voters that it is really important at this time with the enormity of issues that our children are facing. Um, you know, going, coming through the pandemic, the school shootings and all of these things, uh, you cannot afford to elect someone who needs, uh, training on the job. It is important to elect someone who can hit the ground running on day one. I have strong school leadership experience. I have strong community service experience. I've studied up to the doctoral level in education, and I have kids in Broward County Public Schools. I also have a learning center where I have experience running a business. Now, the school board is a four-point-six-billion-dollar business. It is important to put someone there with that experience, with the experience of looking at budgets and be able to make decisions based upon budget items. Uh, I am asking you to select, uh, me because I have that leadership experience that the district needs at this time. I have, uh, twenty-five years as an educator, and I have had, um, numerous experience, uh, in the school district. I was also, uh, served in many leadership roles, including ESAL Coordinator, School Advisory Council Chair. And I also functioned as, as an Assistant Principal Designee. And in addition to that, I have, uh, various experience in the communities, such as I was the Kiwanis Club Chair and, and, and the Plantation Parks and Recreation Board Chair and so on. Elect the person with the right experience, the right knowledge to lead our school district in these times of great need for our students. I'm asking you to elect Jeff Holness and go to votejeffholness.com where you'll find a lot more information about me. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Ms. Lynch, go ahead. You're, you're on mute if you're trying to talk.
Do you mean Ruth Lynch or, uh, Dr. Natalie Lynch?
I, I did, I did mean Ruth Lynch. Alright, well, we'll come back to her. Go ahead. Oh, no, wait, she's here. Uh, you're on mute, uh, uh, Ruth. There you go, you're, you're.
There you go. Thank you. I bring a wealth of experience in dealing with billions and billions of dollars, working for major corporations throughout my life. I bring integrity. I am a board governance trainer, and I understand distinctly the duties and obligations of a board member. I bring, I bring transparency, integrity, integrity, fairness, and, uh, the ability to build consensus. There is, we are, on this school board, you're only one vote, so you've got to be able to work with your fellow board members. That's an imperative issue that you have to know. I have worked within the school district. As a matter of fact, I've matriculated six kids throughout public school throughout my whole life. So I understand what to do when I get there, but let's just face it. The taxpayers, the community, they want to know what we, what are we doing with our money? I think that if we go in and we do a lean six sigma sweep of what we've been doing with our money, we probably could find the money with the current amount of money in order to pay our teachers a, a decent salary. I don't think we need to throw money at stuff all the time. I think we need to make sure that we let the public know what we're doing with every penny. And I'll tell you, I am that person. I'm not afraid to speak the truth. And if you want the truth, you vote for Ruth.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Ms. Lynch Walsh, go ahead.
Okay, um, one of the things I just wanted to highlight that I didn't get a chance to mention was the CCC settlement agreement from August of two thousand. That was supposed sure that the district brought all of its facilities into parity with district standards. That was not even part of the conversation during the SMART bond, uh, planning period, if you will, the summer of twenty fourteen. That cannot happen ever again. Uh, that is what is leading us to continually fight for schools like Parkway, Bethune Elementary, and a host of others, Markham Elementary and Pompano, where schools that should have had buildings replaced were slated to have them painted and the roof and HVAC replaced. So, uh, again, with my background, and I have been immersed in using my professional background in leadership and accounting on the audit committee, looking at, uh, we have audits that we review. The referendum was one of them. An audit is only as good as the scope of services that the auditor agrees to. And if the scope is not sufficient to, for the goals of the audit, then it's, it's not really worth that much. So we have to have better audits. We need an audit of the SMART program itself. Um, we need to continue with the behavioral threat assessment audits. But you need someone on the board, uh, and I'm very confident that come November, we will have a different board. There are, I believe, three board members that are not even going to be there either by resignation or because they have decided not to run. So we're getting to a point where we're going to have a different board. We will not have a majority of the same board members who are responsible for the past ten years. It's almost like a clean slate in some regards, where we should have a board that's committed to doing things differently. Of course, I was there in twenty-twelve when the current board said they were going to be committed to not doing the same things that got the prior board a twenty-eleven grand jury report. So it really comes down to, school board members have to know what their jobs are and what their jobs aren't. And where the superintendent ends and they begin. And that's in state statute, it's in the constitution, it's in their policies. They have to make sure that these things are being followed. There are rules in place that should prevent most, if not all, of the issues that we see. But one thing that I would also be committed to is making sure we have an independent office of inspector general. It was the, one of the few recommendations, the prior, that this board never implemented. And I would argue that since we're now on our fifth grand jury investigation, that we really need that office to be implemented.
Okay, and, uh, finally, Mr. Witherspoon, go ahead.
Yes, uh, well, first of all, I'm going to thank the Senate for allowing, uh, us, of course, the candidates to come in and to, uh, to talk and communicate with those that are a part of this, uh, community, those that are stakeholders. Um, first of all, I, I just want to say this, uh, we want to make sure that we have someone in the, uh, the seat that is going to focus on the voters. Uh, anything that public servants do, uh, our main focus is to make sure and to ensure that the voters, that the needs and that the voters are the ones that should be, that are heard at all times. Um, we want to make sure, uh, that we're doing exactly what those that are part of this community, those that are stakeholders in this community, doing what they really want. Why should you vote for Jim? Well, I'm very, I'm, I'm, I grew up in District Five. Uh, I presently live in District Five, and also I've worked in District Five. Uh, you want someone that is going to be passionate about what they're doing, love what they're doing, and that's going to advocate on behalf of the teachers, the staff, and of course, those that are a part of this, like, district. Uh, many of, um, uh, my constituents have said and talked about, uh, coming together, bridging the gap and working together on that board. When I get elected, you want to have someone that's going to work to get issues done and satisfy to the best of their ability when others. to get issues done and satisfied to the best of their ability with others in mind. And so I'm asking for the community, for their support, to vote me, Jimmy Witherspoon, as your next Broward County School Board Member for District Five.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have to end it there. I appreciate everybody coming on. Thank you so much for, for offering all of your views, and, uh, we will have an endorsement here, um, well, within weeks.